That might not.
Um, still, I don't have an agenda in front of me. Do you have one?
Yeah.
And did it give enough?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Then I got that's the minute.
Oh, I'm exhausted.
What?
Oh, I got plenty of right here. All right, I'll open up this meeting of the mayor planning board. The date is September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh two P M. We are hosting this meeting in hybrid format, which means that board members and members of the public can either join here in town hall or join online through the Zoom meeting. Um, please note that this meeting is being recorded. Uh, we'll skip item one, which is minutes, and we'll go to item two. Uh, which is a, it says here that it's a public hearing, Bill, but I believe this is just a discussion whether we're going to recommend um, the proposed zoning bylaw.
Yeah, we, we've continued from last. Uh, th- th- this will be the conclusion of the hearing. We voted to add the item, approve the article, but we didn't finish.
Okay.
So what we want to do is we'll, we'll the board would take any more public comment if there is, and then make the recommendation, then we close the public hearing and be done.
All right, I will uh then reopen this public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment, continued from August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and so the, the decision at hand is whether, so back on August twenty-second, we voted to sponsor the proposed zoning bylaw amendment as amended during that hearing or that portion of the hearing. Today's discussion is if the board would choose to recommend the zoning bylaw for town meeting. Uh, does, does everyone understand the distinction here? Does anyone have any questions about that responsibility? Uh, you have your speed on this?
Yeah, just to run through the minutes here.
Um, so there's sponsorship and then there's recommendation, right? We sponsored it, sponsored the bill. Now we have, we can decide, we can choose to recommend it. Or Bill and Jim, what are the options? Is it recommend, not recommend, or is it recommend, not recommend, and no comment?
Uh, it technically is all three of the expectations are in one way or another.
Okay.
No comment is not, uh, so, so Tom moderator will call another cutback.
Okay. Right, right. Does anyone have any perspective on whether we should recommend or not recommend it?
I mean, the thought is that, right, by sponsoring it, we are saying it should be up to the voters. And the recommendation is, you know, we've already said that we think it should be up to the town voters.
And sponsorship, right, yeah. The recommendation is, i- is it more, does it fit into the planning goals, uh, the community development goals, the mayor community development principles, things of that nature? Okay. Does anyone have any, any opinions on this?
I think a fair recommendation would be sufficient.
I'm, I'm the same way, yeah, I think it's fine to recommend. Um, I'm just wondering, since we're in a, going to hear you, you want to finish the public comments and then
we can take any action? Yeah. Um, does anyone else have any other thoughts on this before I ask for additional comments?
No.
Uh, I'll open up for public comments. Um, those on Zoom link can either raise, use the raise hand feature for, provide a public comment or uh, en- engage your video and raise your hand itself, and we'll call on each individual if needed. Seeing that at the moment, I'll leave public comment open while we continue this discussion.
I, I can ask you.
Um, th- there's a few things that stood out to me. One is that um, this type of kennel business is, is allowed in other districts in town. So it seems appropriate to also recommend to allow it in this particular zoning district. It, it, it it also promotes additional businesses, which I believe is important for the town itself as well. Um, I, I don't see a lot of I don't see a lot of reason not to recommend in this particular area.
I mean, I think that the only reason not to recommend would be the concerns over disruption, but I think that they do not they are not more worrisome than any, literally any business would, you know, be disruptive compared to an empty zone.
And we have a special permit that will mitigate those types of disruption.
Yeah.
Any final thoughts? Um, Jim, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the plan would recommend this article.
Hey, can I say one quick thing?
We can second it and then continue the comment.
I'll second it. Uh, in the actual, um, town meeting language.
Oh, yeah.
The list of, you know, the list.
Uh-huh.
Is that like kind of redundant? Provided all services offered are contained indoors? And then no activities associated with the operation occurred on the exterior of the business location?
No, because I, 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 I'll tell you why I did that, and we just sent this to friends earlier. My change, um, the reason was because if we said all services contained indoors, um, I don't think that that would typically be, uh, associated with walking the dogs.
Okay.
And that was why.
I like that. Okay, great.
Okay, any other final comments? All right, we'll, we'll do a vote by roll call.
Oh.
On the motion to recommend, uh, Bill, Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And then?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's five zero to recommend the article.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to close this hearing.
Thank you, Matt.
All in favor by hand to close the hearing? It's five zero to close the hearing, Bill.
Yep.
Okay, so business is completed on audio item two.
Um, Mr. Chair, one other thing happened, um, that I didn't have a chance to put on the agenda, but there was a scheduling issue. I don't know if I take care of that prior to, um, the A D U, um, presentation.
Well, I think you do, so let's do it.
I do. Okay, um, we had, this week, the twelfth, obviously, we have our, our regular meeting. We have a special planning board meeting next week, which is a joint meeting with Acton, go over to Powder Mill, Corvus. We will have the opportunity after, um, if we want to do different minutes or anything like that, but in general, the agenda is for the six P M. meeting, special meeting. I have, at this point, I have on the twenty-sixth, we have a determination that is not particularly date sensitive on that. Um, but that, as of right now, I have no public hearings or anything on twenty-sixth. Now, if you flip it over, since Dan wouldn't use two sides, how about that?
Yeah.
Where we would normally have our planning board meeting, we have town meeting. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, um, we got town meeting, then we have the seventeenth, uh, open at the moment, and the twenty-fourth. Um, my suggestion would be this. Um, I got the two to four powder roll package today. It appears it's going to be complete. It's, but it's, um, you know, it's, it's a significant amount of material. Um, it would be, it got in it under the wire to be scheduled on the tenth, but with town meeting, what we can't do, obviously. So what I would propose is either taking our meeting on the tenth, there was there, moving it to the seventeenth, or later on in the week if you incline, I guess. Doesn't really matter. Um, but, um, and cancel the twenty-sixth, which, which has the fire department dumpster, which is a, a minor major determination. So we move that a week or two. I don't think so. Don't mind that at all. Um, but so that would be my, my recommendations. Can the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of September, or?
Oh.
Twenty-sixth of September. Um.
And then, oh, so the fire department determination is on the twenty-sixth of September?
Yeah. Move, move everything to the seventeenth, and we'll see how it goes, but that would.
And you booked fire department and?
Yeah, to fire department, two minutes.
And powder mill for those stuff, uh, two to four.
Right. That would be my, my suggestion, or we could do it later on in the week of the ninth, but, you know, I'm all for.
Are you promising nothing else will happen for the seventeenth?
For the seventeenth?
Yeah.
No? I don't expect anything else on the seventeenth.
So we cancel?
They have, they have, uh, what, another seven days where somebody could come in. I'm not aware of anything in the hopper.
But we would have meetings in on October or next, we have a special meeting next week on the eighteenth, and then after that, we can have a meeting on October seventeenth, and then the meeting on October twenty-fourth?
Well, we have a meeting, the town meeting on the tenth.
Yeah.
Uh, we could have it on the seventeenth, and I don't know if we don't have anything on the twenty-fourth, you know, we don't have it in the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
But right now, if we move it to the seventeenth, now we can put two to four powder mill, firehouse on there.
Is that okay with the fire chief?
I haven't spoken with the fire chief, but I will, I will make a point to it. If it's not, I would say, um,
Could we squeeze it in the nineteenth? No, it's too late.
Do it from the end.
I'll, I'll find out, but I, I would say that I would she's been running pretty good to try to get drawings done and stuff. I believe it would be probably welcomed.
Okay.
But I ca- I would double track it. It's the dumpster that.
However, we can help. Also, once we see commodification, is, doesn't the chair have the authority to determine it's minor, if it is minor?
The board.
Or it'd have to be the whole board, or before it comes?
Um.
This is, this is minor, minor. This isn't like.
The dumpster screening?
Huh?
Is this dumpster screening?
No, it's moving, um, right now, they have a bunch of little dumpsters.
Yeah.
They might put a big dumpster.
You know, the plan, they have a bunch of little dumpsters.
They don't have any, they didn't have anything planned, so. Yeah, I would just check with fire chief, but yeah, I would say go ahead.
Okay, so then that would be, just to recap, I'm gonna, unless fire chief is really having a problem, or we could, we could, you know,
I'm trying calling a virtual meeting on the twenty-sixth of September if the fire chief would prefer to have it done. And we just have that one item.
Okay, and then I can schedule two to four powder mill for the seventeenth. Is that what you prefer, you guys?
With everyone back?
Yeah, or later in the week.
We don't have a choice to do that.
What, well, you could, you don't have to go on a Tuesday.
Do we have anything booked for the twenty-fourth?
I don't have anything booked on the twenty-fourth.
I was just checking.
No, nothing yet.
That if it takes forever, I don't know, you know?
Well, you know, with our two week, we, I think we've pretty much found that what with the larger projects that have to plan revise, the two week thing never works.
Yeah.
This is never work.
Okay. Well, I'm kind of that. Let's move, move the meeting to October seventeen.
And we still keep the twenty-fourth, right, for now?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then we probably wanted to discuss what people on the seventeenth want to make for that anyway, maybe it's possible, yeah.
Let's keep it, and if there's nothing, we'll cancel.
We'll always give a lock, right?
But right now, we're canceling the twenty-sixth.
Canceling the, canceling the twenty-sixth.
September.
Yeah, September. And we're, and we're adding the seventeenth of October.
Yes, um, and the nineteenth next week, a week from tonight, is only virtual.
That's right.
Okay.
And it starts at six P M.
Six P M.
And it's the only agenda item is.
It's the only agenda item.
And Zoom, yeah.
And Zoom, right.
And do we know the objective of that meeting?
Yeah, it, it, um, they're preparing it now, but, but in, in essence, it's to run over, they're gonna, you're gonna get a draft, um, we did the draft overlay district, districts, they're finalizing it now, so it's gonna be to discuss the drafts of, um, the overlay district and the uses that are proposed. It broke the, uh, overlay dis- uh, broke the, um, overlay district into sub-districts. So, so you'll see, we have, and it's pretty neat, I think, it's, it's like there's four different sub-districts, and then the uses within each, so we want to discuss that. Um, the biggest thing I had, the biggest problem I had, uh, was the, the, if we have a, a uses in the underlying district that are already allowed, like for, take anything, you know, that's allowed there. This is a little thing, but do we want to add that into the list of uses that's being proposed? And I said, I don't think we do, because it's already there. We don't want to make it any more complicated than it is. But so you, you, and so the idea is to get your input on this. It's, it's the first step, and that's the idea.
Has it, just out of curiosity, has it taken into consideration N B G A?
Uh-huh.
Great, great.
Uh-huh.
N B G A, it should knock out.
Great.
So it sounds like Acton's a little rushed for that night anyways. Was we want to keep the twenty-sixth as a follow-up discussion on that issue?
Anything, yeah.
We want to keep the twenty-sixth meeting for follow-up discussion on that issue? Because I can't imagine it would be overbetted, you know?
On the twenty-fourth, maybe?
On the nineteenth.
Um. Well, let's see, let's see how it goes. It gives us time, and then that's not public hearing, so we can just do it then, if you want.
And that would be an internal discussion just with us, on the competitive, if we want to.
They had, they have some, they have some major, uh, project right now that was giving them some fits. Um, and I had to kind of bounce around with the dates for them, but it may be, may be okay. The tentative date for the public hearing from this is November seventeenth. But it's, we'll know that date later on, um.
Is that just ours? Is that a joint public?
That's public. Yeah, we'll bring, we'll, 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 public meeting, November seventeenth.
Public hearing on the meeting?
Meeting. So, um, yeah, so as soon as I get, uh, the copy, I'll, I'll forward it to you guys. Yeah, I don't think there's any surprise. I think it's a question of, you know, the uses are basically, a lot of it was um, emphasizing stuff that we have already, you know, like, like, um, and, um, by rights stuff, we did, I, I limited our, um, N B T A communities to fifteen units per acre, which is what the statute requires. Uh, you know, uh, we were trying to figure out, one thing we didn't find out was we wanted to get a, um, we couldn't get a consensus on what the business center is. So we figured that offices, so that's something I want to bring up to the board, we're talking about, like, not, I'm not talking about just like an office, so it's talking like a business center. Is it cover, you know, if we had a um, I'm thinking like specifically in like the Beijing Royal Site, they had an international business center, when there was something, how would we, I want to get something in so we can have something like that.
Kind of like a trade sort of?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And maybe, you know, maybe a special permit or something.
X three trade port?
Cool. Um, a hotel. Hotel.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, but you, you'll see, I don't think there'll be any surprise, what, 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 what you'll be, um, is just the subdivisions, and, and you'll see why we did it and everything like that. But anyways, so that's next week, yeah. And if there is any business that we had to do, you know, we had, it's supposed to be, we could do it after. I don't know what we have, informal stuff, but and, um, so anyway, if that's good, I'll pull the trigger next. And we can always, you know, add a meeting, like I said, if, if, if the acting board wants to carry on, we could do it. We could also, um, you know, with the virtual, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday either necessarily, you know?
No, it's just clearly everyone has Tuesday broke down their calendar, so.
Well, the, 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 the pushback, not pushback, but the, the, the way the dates work is that the select board has, is like, they've changed up their meeting nights, but we're, but they can't come, but, you know, so.
Well, I don't know. Can you, can you?
I don't know.
What do you mean, what do you mean they changed the meeting?
Well, like that, well, they went up, usually, for a while, they were going like, we go, we go the, the second and fourth Tuesday, and usually they go the, the first and the third, and then they had a little hiccup. Remember, they started meeting the same nights as we did for a couple of weeks. Now with a special planning board meeting, we're meeting on their night. So it's just, it's all. Boom.
One more step, one more.
Oh, no. Well, I plan.
Just make sure we have enough Zoom rooms.
Like what?
Enough Zoom rooms. Remember early in the pandemic when we were playing over Zoom accounts?
That's right. No, we've got, I think we've got a pretty big one, man.
Great.
And, um, I also invited, um, just as a, aside, uh, Julian Undergrass is on from the, uh, FinCon, and I think you know, but I, I, I thought it would be, um, important that I invited all the other boards to come, go in to the meeting next week.
Wow, thank you.
So we can, you know, just say, you know what's going on. Uh, Julian, if you're, if you're there, okay, great. Um, thanks for joining tonight. I'm glad to glad you, glad you could make it. Um, hope to see you next week. You're welcome to introduce yourself if you want.
Yeah, let me unmute.
That's unmute.
Hey. I don't know if you can hear me okay. I, uh, my headset died, so there might be a little back, um, but my name is Jill. I am currently the chair of the finance committee. Uh, so I'm a liaison to your board. I, I don't know if I'll be able to make every meeting. I, I'm a lia- liaison to quite a few boards right now. Uh, we have a pretty green finance committee, so a lot of new members, which is exciting. Uh, they're learning the ropes, um, so it's, uh, great to meet you all virtually.
Thank you, Julian. Okay, what else, Bill? Uh, well, we can do either minutes, or we can go into, uh, Bill and Natalie's, um, presentation.
I want to do the presentation.
Okay.
You just want to, want to do the presentation?
Sure.
Okay. Then I pulled it up here. On the, um.
I can go over there to drive it?
That'd probably be the best, Bill. Let's, you can sit in the captain's chair here.
Okay, she drives.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, oh. Stay here. And and then let's do share. There we go. Well, since Julian, you're the only one there. I hope you can see it.
Yep, I can see it.
Oh, good.
You have to do it back there?
Uh, that's good.
I think it worked.
You see it okay?
All right, so while doing that, uh, we uh, there are a couple of different boards in town that is interested in the future of A D U. Our current A U bylaws will go over them. They're slightly incomplete feeling in twenty twenty-three, so, um, a couple of years ago, I started working with someone from the zoning board on some updates, and we had some good conversations, but that sort of petered out. But, um, over the last couple of months, Bill and I started looking at them again, and looking at just like starting to talk about what some updates could be to make it more complete. So that's what this is.
All right. Let's start with the basic as to what is an A D U accessory dwelling unit? And it really does basically a little apartment on the same property as a single-family home. Um, and it could be in the basement, it could be in the attic, it could be standalone shed out back. The key thing is that it's an independent dwelling unit. It has its own door, its own kitchen, own bathroom. It's not like you're sharing a house with roommates. It's, it's an independent, small apartment. Now, and these things can, you know, can happen as a conversion of existing space, or can add be, uh, add-on of new space. You know, you could convert your garage to an A D U. You could, you know, finish off the basement or something like that, or you could finish off the attic, something like that. Or, you know, you could build on top of the garage and build a unit there, or you could just build something out back, whatever. So it could be a conversion of existing space, it could be, it could be used. As Natalie said, we actually have a zoning bylaw that allows accessory dwelling units. Um, and the highlights of that are right here. That's our bylaw, that's the main thing. Takeaway, though, is our from the most says you can only rent these units to family members. Blood, marriage, or adoption, lay it to the owner. Um, it has other rules that, uh, you know, regulates the size, and where you have parking, and what it looks like, and things like that, and, you know, you need a permit from the Z B A, and you need a permit from the building commission, has all that stuff. Um, so what we were talking about is how to take this and make it more flexible and open it up to more people in the community to be able to take advantage of A D U's. And, you know, the, their overall objective is, you know, affordable community housing, and it could come and help out a lot of different people. You know, one of the simplest way of looking at it is, is, you know, a family had a caretaker taking care of one of the family members, and the caretaker lived in a separate apartment on the property. Well, our current bylaw doesn't allow that, because they're not family. Um, but you could have something where, you know, you have a senior in town, and, you know, they can't really afford to live here much, but if they're able to rent out their basement to somebody, maybe they can. Or maybe they want to sell their house, but they want to stay in town, and they don't want to pay four thousand dollars to Camilla Gardens, and, you know, instead they rent an accessory unit at their friend's house. Lots of things could happen. So the overall goal is, you know, affordable community housing, more flexibility. And to do that, we're looking at the existing bylaw and thinking, you know, there's a lot that we keep and a little bit that we change. Um, and talking about what we keep is one of the things that, you know, the owner has to live on the property, okay? Our current rule say six hundred square feet is how big, big you can build these accessory units. Like, well, that's pretty big. I mean, this room here is probably five hundred, four hundred, five hundred, so, you know, it'd be bigger than this. So it's pretty good. Um, and then, you know, all the other rules are still in effect, and you gotta go by the zoning rules about setbacks, and, you know, the border health rules, and the building permit by the commissioner, and it has to be into the neighborhood. Um, but what needs to be changed to make it more flexible is, you know, obviously, the first thing is allow everybody, not his relatives. Another thing that we should consider changing is the requirement that I have a special permit from the Z B A, because you know, these smaller units, there's a lot of other rules that comply with yarders, and, you know, having a special permit doesn't add a lot of value, it doesn't seem, um, but we should discuss that. Um, the other thing is, you know, maybe we want to allow detached, you know, if you have enough room in your backyard, and you're not building next to the property line, and there's room to comply with all the setbacks, well, why can't you convert the space, a barn in the back, to a living unit or something like that? Um, a minor thing is, you know, allowing, uh, this to occur in any zoning district, for just the way it's written now, says it can only really occur in S one and S two. But, you know, we have single-family houses in every zoning district. Then the last thing um, that we brought up as a suggestion is, you know, reinforcing the fact that this is affordable community housing and establishing a rent cap on these units. Um, and the suggestion is limited to seventy percent of what's called the fair market rent, that's determined, we'll get into a little more detail in a second, but just to talk about a couple of the, the key factors here. One is the size of these things. Um, the minimum size of these units is all set by state law. I mean, there's a certain square feet per person you have to do, and, you know, it's about three hundred-ish, something like that. Um, as I said, the current maximum size that mayor allows is six hundred square feet. That seems plenty big. Um, the only suggestions would be that, you know, in order to make it compatible with all housing, make it six hundred square feet or fifty percent of the size of the dwelling units, whichever is smaller.
So if someone has a thousand-square-foot house, they're not going to come in and build a six hundred-square-foot accessory unit, right? Because that would take over more than half of their house if they were. accessory unit, right? Because that would take over more than half of their house if they were converted.
They can only do five.
Right.
Um, because these are supposed to be small units next to the main house and, you know, they're not supposed to hold along, you know? So just think something about that. And the other thing would be, you know, maybe highlight that it's a little bit different. I'm not really sure the six hundred square feet, that's a big issue, but um, uh, something to consider. Um, now, as far as permitting goes, you know, yes, we, you know, we have the building occupancy permit from the building commissioner and actually ask him to do it every couple of years in our current bylaws and that makes sense. Um, and also border health has something to say about this too. But that permit from ZBA, it's a one-time thing and like I said, you know, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of money for the people and it doesn't seem to add a lot of value for the whole thing, not I mean, everything that the ZBA special perm is trying to accomplish seems like it can be accomplished with a building commissioner and um, a zoning bylaw that focuses on small units and, and compliance with other um, town standards. Now, as far as that rent cap goes, this is something that um, we stole from Salem, Salem Mass. And, you know, all by this is affordability. You know, they're not trying to make landlords rich here. We're just trying to, you know, give them away and make some money and provide affordable housing. And the way Salem does it is they set the rent cap at seventy percent of what's called the fair market rent, which is some number determined by HUD um, for every town in the state. And this does include utilities, includes a few hundred dollars in utilities. So the fair market rent in Maynard right now for a one bedroom is two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven.
Good lord.
Which is up there, you know? You know, we're talking little units here. So, you know, seventy percent, you know, a lot of them may even be less than it, less than the sixteen hundred and sixty-four adjusted rent cap, but you know, as a reminder that, you know, these are supposed to be affordable units and these are, you know, luxury things that people are gonna start renting out for four thousand bucks a month. Um, I think it belongs in there. Couple other things, uh, the basics. You know, the owner has to live on the property, that's fine. Um, but our current bylaw doesn't make it clear what happens during temporary absences. And we think that, you know, if they live in Florida, during winter, that's fine. If they get um, called up by the military for a year and they're not there, well, they should still be able to rent out the ADU. They're end up in the hospital or rehab for six months, that's fine too. So we think, you know, if we just have a rule that, you know, it may have temporary absences, but you just can't rent out your personal residence while you're absent. And then, of course, you know, these shouldn't be Airbnb's. You know, this is longer term community housing. This is not, so landlord's gonna make a quick mark. And then the other little thing, you know, gotta have the off-street parking for all the tenants and as I mentioned, it needs to apply to all single-family homes throughout the town and non-distant and the S twenty-two. So that's the basic outline of, you know, options to take our existing zoning uh, bylaw and expand it and open it up, make it more flexible for more people and, and more circumstances for the the people in town. So at this point, cool, like to hear thoughts on, you know, our existing one, possible changes, whether you like everything, you hate everything. Whatever.
Thank you for for both of you for putting this together. I think it was very thoughtful. Any thought to questions?
I have a question, uh, Bill and Nat. Uh, could you have more than one ADU on the law?
No. Not, not with what we're proposing.
Okay, and, and one question, how was this, uh, your, your policy, how does that compare to the legislation that the uh, homeowners now were um, deciding to do?
Which legislation? Is there like a statewide legislation?
Yes.
I don't know.
Bill? They're proposing it. I don't think it has, has gone through yet as a.
No, it hasn't gone through yet, but it is.
Full, yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I haven't done a complete deep dive on it yet.
Now, there is a uh,
Yeah.
A, a, something on the, the docket for them to make a decision.
Well, that will be definitely worth looking at. I, to, to put this together, we looked at a whole bunch of different towns in Massachusetts and kind of took the best parts that we thought from them and from across the country. We've got some stuff from Oregon in there, you know, some of it's not relevant, but you know, we kind of tried to look at a variety. I mean, towns, they, they all do it in different, slightly different ways, you know, some have very few guidelines or restrictions and some have very specific ones.
Well, I mean, uh,
But yeah, we should.
Make the next first comment. I think you guys did a tremendously good job. Putting this thing together very clear, very concise. Makes a lot of sense. And I think Maynard is a good town for this to fit in quite comfortably.
Yeah, to me, I mean, it's, you know, all of our housing goals involve a larger variety of housing, right? Period. And this fills a gap for those smaller, smaller units. But residential neighborhood, you know, it's just, I think it, I think it fits in nicely.
And maybe an opportunity for some people that uh, uh, maybe people who are older or whatever, to be able to afford their house based upon being able to have a accessory dwelling unit to rent out.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
Now, what do people think about the size? Because some communities are like, oh, sure, nine hundred square feet, whatever. Um, but it just struck me that that's a little on the big side and especially considering that, you know, the units that we're moving in, like one fifteen mainstream to stop them, those will three or four hundred square feet. I mean, a lot of them aren't that big, so it doesn't seem like you need that much space. And maybe nine hundred square feet seems like a little overkill. What's intended for these kind of things?
We looked into a lot of towns will try and find a proportionality, right? Based on if you have a giant primary residence on the property, then proportionally, maybe your ADU can be bigger. But that gets into some math. I mean, we can, we can go there. We, we decided to sort of just pick six hundred because it's also what we already had.
I think I had a question. Would you also move smaller?
Mm-hmm. That's a max.
That's a max.
The minimum is the one step by the state, which is, I think, about three hundred and fifty square feet, so.
I, I think for now, it's, I think, a good anchor point. And we can look at whether we want to improve that number a little bit in the direction. I don't have an answer now, of course. I do like the concept of having maybe another calculation for proportionality. If you have a you know, a thirty-five hundred square foot home and there's not a lot in Maynard for the housing stock, but if you do, maybe it's, you know, six hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the current you know, square footage of the house or something. I don't know.
Yeah.
So you could look at that.
Yeah.
Do you think, I, I had three comments.
I feel that.
Yeah. But, but going back to what you just said, I, I, my concern with that, with going proportionately larger is the spirit of this is to create affordability and to create a housing option that we don't have currently.
Mm-hmm.
If we stay at six hundred square feet, it, the first place, you always want it to be subordinate to the primary use.
Mm-hmm.
But if we had some ginormous house, so we made it proportionally larger ADU, then it, then it kind of seems it's, it's not keeping with the spirit. More catch, question of, oh, I can, that would be my, my, my first comment.
So you're saying that regarding Maynard's housing stock, it would be beneficial to have more housing stock in the six hundred square foot number and not say a thousand or twelve hundred square foot?
I, I think that is the case, but I also think that the spirit of what we're, this, this is great.
Mm-hmm.
The way you guys did it was right, because it's getting lays it out. It's what we're doing, why? You could keep that same, the integrity of the whole thing by, you know, saying, okay, this is what we're trying to do, not create a proportional way to get a second home in here.
Right.
We're talking, you know, we're, we're trying to make it. The other questions I had, um, th- this, you guys were right on. You hit all the stuff. It was really good. And how do we make this? Or is there a way we can make a count against the SHI? That's number one.
Can you explain what the SHI?
Oh, uh, subsidized housing in the Jordan. In other words, we're, okay, wouldn't it be cool if we could, and I'll bet the new legislation might drop somewhere.
Could you comment on the new legislation?
Yeah, yeah. So it would be nice, because if we created these, it'd be nice to be able to say, hey, this is one more affordable unit.
Alright, so two things. One, I hate just trying to do numbers on a piece of paper. I want people to be able to live in places they can afford, so I don't really care if it's on the SHI.
Mm-hmm.
And two, it's expensive to get a single unit on the SHI. Because you gotta do paperwork, you gotta do the lottery, you gotta do the annual thing. All sorts of stuff. They have to commit to a permanent easement or semi-permanent easement or restriction, rather. Um, it's a lot of things and it costs money. And I don't think it's worth it for the single unit.
Is that, would that even be part of the zoning?
I don't know.
I, I just, I just. Or those two separate discussions. If it, we could get it as a, 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 of annual, you know, we renew our numbers annually and, and, but, but Bill's right, you know, I can understand his point, but any, and he's, um, okay, that is why it doesn't mean that in the future, state legislation can't change.
Right.
So it, it's cumbersome to get these on.
I think it's something to think about at least.
Can I say something related and wacky? Can you hold your next point?
Mm-hmm.
So a couple of these other towns. A couple of these other towns did have language written, written into their zoning and said things regarding if you are going to rent it, you know, at a certain affordability rate, a low, you know, a lower cost, the town will waive certain fees, you know, like, which, which seems a little, I, I didn't hate it though, you know, it's like, if you're willing to take this property on and commit to it being maybe on a year-by-year basis or the two-year renewal for the occupancy or whatever it is, being in some certain affordability range, we will waive certain.
I guess, right.
I don't know if it'll fit into our language, but it's something to keep in mind.
No, it's a good point. And I certainly, I'm not at all implying that it should be a wrong road block. I'm just saying, could we grab, you know, could we scoop up some?
Yeah, is there a way?
First priority is the first priority.
Yeah.
Clearing that. The second question I had, um, I, I kind of, I spoke to Bill about this the other day, um, briefly, but, but I understand it. We, those of us who are working with a housing production plan understand it. The question we would have to be able to answer in a soundbite and, and to make clear is that this is not a question of circumventing existing zoning. This is providing a subordinate structure that is necessary to the home. It's not a way that all of a sudden you're gonna build two houses where you're only allowed to build one. And I think that would be the messaging on that we could do pretty good. But I think that is true, but you guys knocked that apart.
Yeah, and related to what you said, I mean, one of the standard provisions in these codes is, yeah, they can't have two different owners. It is one owner. Condo with the thing or something like that.
Just, just, just we have something like boom, not.
Yeah, we'll come up with a couple of sentences.
Great job. Other thoughts coming?
Nah, he was great. I have a couple of questions. I think he answered this already, but our current zoning only allows one ADU on a property?
It only allows one detached. Detached, yeah.
So there's no detached allowed currently?
Correct.
Correct. And we would be proposing only one maximum on a property? Yeah, no, nothing I've ever seen allows more than one.
Right.
Because you're all, you know, nationwide, it's just one.
Yeah.
Single family with one unit.
I don't think I want to go more than that either.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, I, because I don't know what I think that opens up.
Yeah, that's often the first line.
Yeah.
It was like one per.
So why was this, was the ZB a permit? Was that just a use permit? What was the, what's the permit for?
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, what is the permit for? Permit for? What does it do? I think it's because it, you know, it's like, ooh, extra people living in a single-family housing.
But I, I don't know. So you don't know what the permit would actually allow?
I don't think that very many are actually, I don't even know if there are any active ones in Maynard currently.
Bill? There's, it, that's typically, um, I, I, I think that, that this, I can't figure out a reason for it because the, the, the idea is one of these are, people probably got a little bit squirrely when they're writing.
Because of the unknown sort of factor is that?
Yeah, I mean, the building, this is all stuff, eh, these guys were right on. Eh, the building commissioner could determine this right away. This is not a chance for you to say no, you know, a, a, a lot of their board is.
I'm just trying to
Yeah.
understand if the, the permit is actually allowing anything additional to a.
No, no, because it, it, it's the bylaws.
According to the bylaw, the, a special permit may be granted by the ZBA for the conversion of an existing or new single-family dwelling to accommodate additional family living unit.
I mean, installation on a common wall or a kitchen or.
That's the way it's.
It allowed for the conversion.
They're allowing the creation of the dwelling. That's a special one.
Okay.
And then after that, it's all up to the building.
That does seem more like building permit to me, but.
Yeah.
Right. But, okay. I don't, yeah, I don't see a reason to have a and I, I agree with that. I agree with waving the ZB.
And can, actually, you know, in the current language, as a, as rules about the maximum of three people occupying it and it's in that that the discretion of the ZBA, I guess the ZBA could say, oh, only one person can live there or something. They felt like.
Doesn't health department have a maximum for?
They have some.
Yeah, they have square footage.
Yeah, yeah, for, for, for a person, yeah. So if, if, if it's whatever the square footage is, you know, they're already gonna be.
I don't want to, I don't, I would rather rely on the health department and the building commissioner.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
To keep it consistent throughout.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I agree. So we're not gonna have, you know, eight hundred people in it, you know, it means, yeah.
Okay, um, these are only currently allowed on residential properties, right? You said S one, S two only now?
Mm-hmm.
There, and we would only be proposing them to be allowed in, but you said any zoning district, but it would have to be on a residential property.
Single family.
Single family, yeah. I mean, you can't add it to a duplex or something.
Okay, right.
And add it to a single-family property.
And we wouldn't add it to a to a commercial establishment, right? Something like ADU on it. Because we have commercial establishments in zoning, in residential.
Yeah, that's, that's a different, that's not, no. ADUs naturally are just added to a single-family house.
And you already talked about the, the residency being owned and a single owner and occupied single owner.
Yeah.
Now, they, there have been many situations where the owner, let's say that it's, for example, an older, older person who's, you know, now living alone in a big house. There have been situations referenced in other towns where they talk about that owner moving into the accessory unit and then renting their house. But again, that person is maintaining ownership. There's no, they're not selling off their house.
Living on the property.
And, and living on the property. So the property is not being, you know, abandoned by the actual owner.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, how was the fair market rent calculated?
Wow.
If it's, if it's a deep dive, that's fine. I'll look it up.
It, it's, actually, you know, there's a page that they have that describes how they do it.
Is it, is it a regional calculation similar to AMI?
Doesn't seem to be that regional. It seems to be, um, a little more detail. So, I mean, you on the site, you just click your town.
So it's probably more accurate than the AMI.
Yes, it's a little more accurate than the AMI, but you know, it's not precise to Maynard. It's still
But it's local, it's local.
It's more localized than the AMI.
Yeah, and it's the best official sort of stat we have.
And it's something they update all the time, you know, and it's, it's there every year and it's not going away.
And it's government determined.
Yeah.
So.
It is what it is and they, they tell you what the number is for next year and they tell you what the number is for this year, so you can plan ahead.
And there's no other anchor point besides, it's either that or AMI, right? Is there any other anchor points that we could use?
You just said a number.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. I don't want to get into business of that.
Right, right.
I want to, I want to track something.
I want to like track the, uh, you know, the average salary of a person at
Sure.
McDonald's and then tie it to that. That's not gonna happen.
The HUD number is actually just, it's more useful than AMI because AMI is household income that you have to then convert to people, which when you convert to bedrooms and the HUD stuff, just as you just said, it's a one-bedroom, it's as much.
No, I agree. I, I think it's fine. Um, so there will be questions about water capacity?
Hmm.
Right? And how do we, have you put thought into how this will impact? I think we all.
I think we all know the math, so like, additional people live on the residential property has additional water capacity needs. We have a water capacity challenge in town, we don't want to exacerbate that if possible, but have you put thought to this?
Well, I don't see how it applies to this type of zoning, it applies to bigger issues, it's like, well. We don't even apply that when a project comes before us. So it's a bigger issue.
Yeah.
Than.
Those point was that unless D P W is gonna start banning people from doing additions on their houses, like. It's hard to say this is where we're gonna draw the line.
And you can stop your kids from moving back home and taking showers. But, you know, we, we keep approving. Multi-unit apartment buildings, yeah.
Yep, yep, no, the the question's gonna come up.
Yeah.
So it's, be good to be thoughtful about, about it ahead of time.
Yes, I'll bring that up next week, when we talk about.
For consistency.
Yes.
Yes, okay, um. Can tiny houses fit into this sort of concept?
Wow, that, I mean, that's my whole thing. What is a tiny house? What's the definition? If you say it's three hundred fifty square feet, absolutely.
Tiny houses are the patch ADU.
Yeah.
Is, is there additional, but tiny houses, I think. Can come with additional. Um, can be tied to building permits in their regulations a little bit differently, so like size of bathrooms. Um, you know, piping size, wall thickness, sizes, stuff like that, so I don't.
Room, room sizes and things are set by the state sanitation, sanitation code, so I don't think it matters. Maybe the construction. Materials and design and work has different things. One thing to keep in mind is, our definition dwelling unit requires a fixed foundation. And so it's not, you know, using a trailer home or something.
Yeah, that's right, that's important.
Or a tiny house is not going.
Or a conex box or something, unless it's actually anchored down.
So I, I wondered about this too, in terms of like, I feel like tiny houses are ushering in a whole bunch of new building practices. I think that that can be part of, that's just gonna have to be part of the building department, right? Like, that's just gonna, when they update that, then, or, you know. Yeah. I keep harping on about composting toilets. And it's like, when the board of health or the building department says that those are okay, then they'll be okay, but we can't. We can't put that in this, you know, I think that that's just gonna have to come married into it.
Yeah.
But I'm with you.
Yeah, Karen.
We do tiny basement renovations.
Whenever, um, whenever we discuss this, too, if it moves forward. Moves forward, we wanna make sure that we. Highlight the consistency with the master plan, consistency with the housing production plan. And all this, I mean, it's not like we just, oh, you're gonna do this, and, you know, and not to mention state. Uh, objectives, so I think this is.
Solid, it's a good point, it. We, it's almost like in in under, we haven't discussed explicitly, it's more like implicitly, I feel like this group here understands that. This all works in the direction of town goals. But we, it'd be very helpful to state that outright, I agree. Very cool, um, thanks guys, what's next steps?
Yeah, so I mean, we could write up a draft zoning language, but, um. You know, if we want something to happen for. Spring town meeting, then. We need public participation in November, December, right?
Do you think, um? I mean, if we could do, if we did, do we need an additional public workshop into a public, an addition to a public hearing for it? That we could really promote, I'm thinking, you know, we could, the groups that would be interested in this. There's a lot of them, I mean.
There are a lot of them.
Do we need? Well, I mean, if we could do it, that's great.
Well, one of the cautions I have is. It's not the participation, well, it's, it's. Making this stage of the effort more complex than needs to be. We already have a piece in place now, and we're trying to make that. A little bit better, and I think we can do that by the spring town meeting. But if we try to swing for the fence and do all sorts of stuff, and, you know. And get it too complex and too many what ifs, and, you know. We're gonna run out of time for the spring town meeting and not get anything.
Yeah, what we're starting to do is, from the slides, reframe this, frame this as, this is changing, adjusting what we already have. This is not writing a whole new bylaw, even though essentially, I mean, we are, you know, the current one is rather.
Yeah, you're amending, you're amending our, that's all it is.
And.
To be consistent with.
And and if we want to. And if something were to pass and change, then a year or two after that, we find that, oh, we wanna expand it more, then we could do it then. But I wouldn't try to do everything.
Maybe we could do it with just the one hearing that we have to have anyway, we just invite everybody and their brother that would be interested in it and be done with it.
I would, I would just say, let's get a, maybe get a draft on bylaw, right? And then we'll see what the changes are. And then we can schedule a hearing.
Do the state regs, you can do that.
Right, and then if that hearing, depending on feedback we receive, we could, could obviously continue the hearing. As well.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I actually know a reason why, I mean, I agree, what you proposed is modifications to a current zoning regulation.
To increase the town's consistency with its own regulatory framework and guiding.
And goals.
Yeah, nah, it's.
I don't see a lot of. Based on your presentation, I don't see. Um, like a paradigm shift on this at all, so I I I think, I think it is inherently a modification in current zoning.
Yeah.
So it's, and it keeps it subordinate.
To the main, the principal structure.
It's accessory.
No, it's good, it's a great update.
I love it.
Um, and it shows that this is working towards town goals, so thank you for that. Yeah, so let's shoot for November, right? Maybe?
Yeah. You mean, short for a hearing for November?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, I I think, and the stuff, the little stuff, we wanna look through and make sure it's good, like, for example, the detach, we wanna make sure the detach. You know, things like that, um. The, the, you know, um.
Yeah, like the detach, you need a, a rule that says the detach has to comply with the same setbacks as the principal house.
Right.
And if they need to.
It can't be like a garden shed where you can park it next to the fence, no, it has to be thirty feet back from the property.
And if they want, if someone wants those to change, they have to go for a variance, right?
Yeah, like anything, yeah, you could always say, oh, I got this big old rock in the back and I needed twenty-five feet from the property line, maybe Z V A would then.
Right.
Say, okay.
And it might, yeah.
Same as anything else.
Same as anything else. Right, that's the point, consistency here.
Let's get it on for spring.
You're right, Z V A should mess with that weird stuff and not all of them.
Yeah, right, and it shouldn't have to be dealt with inside of this zoning, it can be dealt with in the zoning variance that's required for any.
Yeah, it's just like anything else.
Yeah, okay, any final thoughts?
For S one.
For any single family, any single family property anywhere in town.
If, if, if this property has, say, just like two acres on it.
Yeah.
Are they, are they able to subdivide and build an A D U?
They don't need to subdivide to build A D U, you just add it on to your house. Or you convert your garage or whatever, if if subdivision would be a subdivision.
Yeah, right.
So then subdivision.
This would just be the, yes, but if you have the space and if you. Yeah, you do.
Yeah, that's a good question, because, because here's, here's one thing that we should address too. Okay, we, we have two conforming lots, right, like this table, right, there's two conforming lots. Okay, it's easy, we, for the, on that one, because we say, alright, yeah, you you're gonna have your A D U, it's gonna conform with. What if it's a, if it's a non-conforming lot, like, let's say this is half the size. Of a, of a regular. And the A D U, then you're gonna have to go through the process of a, whatever, a variance. For that, yeah.
But similar to if they wanted to put a garage there or.
Right, right, but you know, if you're just converting your basement.
That's different.
Yeah, it probably is good correctly anywhere.
I don't understand how a family that needs an affordable house because of a six hundred square foot room. I don't understand that.
It's, I don't think it addresses necessarily families moving into an accessory unit.
It could be a single parent with two children.
One or two kids, sure, yeah. I don't think.
But no, it's not gonna be a six member family.
No, yeah, I don't think it, it addresses that. But I don't think it should either.
Cause it's only, I mean, we're not putting in two bedroom, but it's essentially, you know, what we're imagining is.
Something in veterans, right?
Yeah.
We have veterans there, that should also be, put that language in with your families or. Towns or, I don't see any veterans in there.
Well, we said seniors, I was trying to be.
Right, and seniors, of course, that has to be in there.
Yeah.
I mean, I I see a lot of seniors who. You know, house is too much for any area of the house, but. I have to, I have to leave Maynard because I can't afford to rent a place in Maynard. But, you know, this.
And like.
Something they can afford.
And I think also focusing on the fact that, like, staying in your community is an important thing for both. People who are older, but also younger people coming in, you know, trying to maintain. A place for those people to live.
It's a goal of the master plan.
Yeah.
To keep, I'll keep it for that, so, you know, that stuff we're loaded for bear on. Was the goals and stuff, we just have to work through the little, little stuff will pop up like that, we just figure it out.
Good, good question, Owen, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Okay, um, meeting minutes, it's, seems like a. This is wrong, you know.
Alright, so I got two huge comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dude.
One is, where is number four?
Number four?
Yeah, I like the numbering.
Well, number is good, but number four is wrong, so maybe five is what we call, whatever.
Oh, okay, alright.
Minor fix, and then. I would appreciate, uh, the ending time on minutes.
Okay. I will do that, I will add that by the, um. I just go on the.
Yeah, I can get that, sure.
Um, this is the one I missed, this is, here. We have you as here? We do, you weren't there? No, I missed last one. Thought you were on T V. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll take that, I'll knock that back.
Okay, what else? So I got, except, um, our next week, our meeting. Alright, I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from August twenty second.
As amended.
As amended. In seconds. All in favor by hand? Five zero bills for the.
Um, the other thing for the recommendation, I forgot to tell you, guys, the recommendation that we did with the, um. Um, for the channels. For who? Typically, I write up, um. You know, little report. I, Chris will present it, I mean, you wanna do it like that?
Same way, a staff report on the recommendations?
No, it's just a plan, it's a.
Oh.
Oh, you mean?
Um. I think we should do it similar to how it's been done in the past, I I'm not gonna be. I'm not gonna be presenting the merits of this.
Right.
Um, I'm just gonna say that. The board recommends. Um, and that the reasoning is that it's, makes sense for the building by law standpoint, that's it.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not, don't wanna give a presentation on it.
Gotcha.
Uh, I believe that the applicant, caper group. Can be allowed to speak if the moderator allows it.
That's right, moderator has to allow it.
So if the moderator allows them to speak, they can speak on behalf of the merits of it.
Okay.
But I don't feel like I wanna advocate on a particular. That figure of doctrine of business, I just don't find it appropriate.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Understood.
Does that make sense, you guys?
Although I think we're gonna need some. Visuals or something and have them ready to help with questions. I'm not sure we really want the applicants to, to provide their own slideshow, but. You know, people probably need a map of where are we talking about.
That's fair, we could, um, that's actually a very good point.
Well, we're not talking about site specific.
We could talk about the N V O D and talk about, show people, show them.
Not everybody knows what the N V O D is. Yeah, not everybody, when you see one thing and they don't really, not everybody know. It doesn't hurt to remind them.
That's, that's a valuable point, we could, I could give a quick overview. We can talk later, but I could give a quick overview of the N V O D and how this would fit in and what, what, what the sponsorship of this article actually means. Without giving the merits on it.
Okay.
I can get the technicalities.
Weird things, like, well, the owner of the property can request zoning changes, we have to go through the planning board.
Yeah.
Chris, uh, you might, uh, and when you make your recommendation or your, uh, approval or not approval. You might wanna, uh, check with the, uh. Cap or group, and if they have somebody who's going to speak, you might wanna in your approval say. And the cap or group will have somebody to speak on that, so if they catch them, they're not to get up and. And wait and so on and so forth.
Understood. And we can ask the moderator.
Yeah, let's moderate.
We're getting that right here. We always do a free game, those meetings.
Yeah, yeah, where's this gonna be on the agenda?
We're number one.
After everybody leaves.
No, we're first. We're first on this one. First time I've ever been number one on the general rates.
Cause the school thing, everybody was just leaving right after that, yeah.
You think six people left the board, that won't be enough. I'm bringing Monty. What's the quorum for this?
Uh, seventy-five. Five, but, you know, it's only if you call it. You don't call it.
Okay, what else?
Bill, that's all I got. That is it, we, um, are, um. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Um, Jim?
I appreciate you. You ready, Bart? Alright, Mr. Mark, Mr. Jim, and I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion if we close the meeting.
I'll second that, all in favor by hand? Five zero to close the meeting, thanks everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Yo, thanks for joining again, hope to meet soon in person.
Yeah, thanks for inviting, good night.
Thanks, Joe.